Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council, your city council, which meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday here in City Council chambers, John Ferraro Council Chambers, Room 340, on the third floor of City Hall. Except for the first Friday of the month, including this coming Friday, when we meet at Van Nuys City Hall, we welcome at these open meetings members of the public to come, give general public comment, or to give comments on items that have been agendized for public comment. And you can read our agendas at www.lacity.org, or by contacting the City Clerk's office. We also have agendas here in council chambers when you make your way down. If you live closer to Van Nuys, when we have meetings downtown, you can always testify via remote facility at Van Nuys, and we can hear you here in council chambers, vice versa when we're in Van Nuys. You can always come down to downtown and give testimony here, and we are able to hear that in Van Nuys. We are broadcast each council meeting live on Channel 35, LA City View, your city channel, which has regular programming on the city of L.A. and the news that affects Angelenos. We also are webcast through our city's homepage at www.lacity.org, which I mentioned before. You can also search our previous council motions and find out information about our city department, city services, and elected officials there. Lastly, if you aren't close to a computer or television, you can always phone into our council phone service, which is audio of all of our council committee meetings and the full council meetings as well. That number is (213) 621-CITY, and you can select the city council meeting and listen to everything happening there. I want to thank the council members that are here pursuing to council rules on time. That is Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Wesson, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Rosendahl. I want to thank them all for being here on time, and ask our other council members to make their way down to council chambers as soon as possible. Councilmember Gruel, if you'll please join us. Councilmember Hahn, if you'll please join us. Councilmember Weisar, if you'll please join us. Councilmember Labange, Padia, Parks -- I'm sorry, Labange and Padia are excused today. Reyes, and Mr. Wesson is excused as well, my apologies. If you make your way down as soon as possible. And we want to welcome, in the meantime, to council chambers, the Honorable Michael Wilson, the Canadian Ambassador to the United States of America. We're very pleased to have him here in council chambers, recently appointed as representative of his country to ours. We want to thank our neighbor from the north for being here, and as soon as we have a quorum, we will begin this meeting. Thank you. While we are awaiting our quorum, we want to welcome again our mayor, Antonio Villagosa, with His Excellency, the Honorable Michael Wilson, the Canadian Ambassador to the United States, to say a couple words. Please, if we are welcome, the ambassador with a round of applause. Welcome to council chambers.
I have the honor of receiving and meeting with the ambassador from Canada, Ambassador Wilson, who's on his first visit to the great city of Los Angeles. We talked about the fact that Canada's our number-three trading partner, and competing very closely with Japan for number two. More than a million Canadian visitors come to California, and we're hoping to work with Canada from our "See My L.A." campaign. Bring most of them here to the city of Los Angeles. Just to give you an example of why it's so important for us to have these relationships, Canada imports nearly $10 billion in goods from California. Canadian tourists spend about $710 million in California, and we want them to spend even more. So we want to welcome Ambassador Wilson, and I have a resolution for him of welcome. I think it's here. A few minutes ago, I was with Councilmember Labange, and the Pro Tem, Ms. Gruel, and Councilmember Zine, and on behalf of them, and the city council, I'd like to present you with a certificate of welcome to you to this great city of Los Angeles, and I look forward to working with you in the coming years.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your very warm welcome, and the resolution that you gave to me. I am delighted to be here in the council chamber, meeting with your colleagues in council. As one of you referred to earlier, you represent the fifth-largest city of Canada. The Canadians who are living here in Los Angeles, we very much welcome the relationship that we have. You talked about the trading relationship, the tourism relationship. There are many, many things that draw us together, and that is the reason why I'm here in Los Angeles, to reinforce that strong relationship, and talk to people in Los Angeles about some of the important things that are on our agenda. We have a strategic innovation partnership that ties together UCLA with some of our universities in Canada, and this is very important in looking at things such as stem-cell research, the broadband network that we have that links Los Angeles and Canada. We also, through this partnership that we have with you, we are looking at the important area of pandemic preparedness, the importance of how we can secure our communities from the effects of pandemics. We have, in a broader sense, a very important relationship in working together in Afghanistan. The United States, Canada, 33 other nations are very active parts of protecting Afghanistan, trying to rebuild Afghanistan, but the importance of gaining stability in Afghanistan to support that rebuilding is a very important part of our mission together. Mr. Mayor, we also talked about the importance of getting the Western Hemisphere Travel Initiative right. This is very important to ensure that those flows of trade and people, which are so important to the strength of our communities, we must ensure that the implementation of this travel initiative is done properly, and doesn't disrupt or put two great obstacles between California and Canada. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm delighted to be here with you. I'm delighted to have met members of your council here. We have a terrific relationship between California, Los Angeles, and the United States with Canada. We want to build that, and trips that I am taking here today, and that we hope you will take to Canada, will be very important reinforcements to that. Thank you all very much for giving me the opportunity to appear before your council and say a few words. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Your Excellency. And just before you leave, Councilmember Labange would like to add his good words.
Ambassador Wilson, again, thank you, and it's great to have you in these great chambers. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for bringing the ambassador here. You know, there's so much similarity between our countries, and a great friend is Canada to the United States, but also the special relationship between Los Angeles and Vancouver, which is our sister city, our 20th year this year. I recommend everyone to go to Vancouver. It's a great city to visit. I meant everyone from Vancouver to come to visit Los Angeles. But equally, you're going to have the Olympic Winter Games there shortly, which is very exciting, and all the mayor is leading the effort to get the Olympic Games back here in 2016. And also, you have a great mayor in Vancouver, Sam Sullivan, who was so touching at the closing of the Winter Games from his wheelchair, was the first to accept the flag as they transferred the flag from the -- at the end of the games to the mayor Sullivan, who's a great friend, who's been to this city council in the past. Canada's a great country, and we welcome you along with the mayor, and you have a great council general, Dua, who's such a wonderful -- the whole staff of the Canadian council does a great job for you. It's the fifth-largest Canadian city in the world, Los Angeles, California. Welcome again.
Thank you very much, Council. Thank you very much, and thank you again for being here in council chambers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. I can call the roll if you want. Cardenas, Gruel.
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weasel, Labange, Padia, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds. If there's no objection, those minutes will be approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds. If there's no objection, those will be approved as well.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Yes, please. Let's take a public comment. I'd like to invite forward Zuma Dogg, his six-month anniversary, and then Arnold Sacks, Zuma Dogg, for a public comment, then Arnold Sacks, then we'll go out to the Valley with Bruce Darian, then we'll come back here. Two minutes, please.
Yes, hello, my name's Zuma Dogg, and how great for the mayor to be here on the sixth anniversary of Zuma Dogg, y'all. This is the sixth month -- ah, he's laughing, bro. I've been hitting him up pretty hard for the past six months to this day, but I'd like to say it's been a great experience in my life since I've been coming here, and I would like to tell everybody watching that it is true, you can come down to City Hall and speak out, and, you know, get the word out to the people, and you can work hard and maybe make a few changes. There have been a lot of positive changes at City Hall since myself, Matt, and a few others have come through here like the Tasmanian devil. And right now, what I'd like to do is say that we have a lot of need for social services in this town. The police are now starting to try to get down there to Skid Row to take a situation at hand. Unfortunately, now we have a lot of dispersion, because we know that some of these homeless people that are being enforced at Skid Row are now making it down to Venice Beach and throughout the 15th district. So I think we need to have -- we need to have social programs throughout the 15th districts, and we can't allow the government alone to do it. Of course, they need to step up, but it's too big a problem. We have different services. Michael Corion, he speaks, he'll be having something to say. Please listen to him. Organizations like the Salvation Army and those types of organizations, we need volunteerism. We had the Million Trees at L.A. that was -- can you hand me the tree? Here's the tree, Zuma Dogg, out at Hazard Park for Million Trees L.A. We need -- there was an all-volunteer event. Without the volunteers or the people that showed up, there wouldn't have been an event. We've got a lot of people, pillars of the community out there, they're the ones with the least money, and they don't get paid, and they're stepping up, and we need a lot more of that in the city, because, believe me, we got a huge problem of dispersion of the homeless at Skid Row, and congratulations to LAPD for getting in there. We need more social services throughout all 15th districts. Dispersion is now the problem. Again, please do something. Reach out, go to some of these events, okay, and then we'll bash them on the agenda items separately. Thank you. Zuma Dogg, six-month anniversary.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. Arnold Sacks. Welcome to City Council.
Good morning. Thank you very much. I just wanted to comment about an article that was -- appeared in the Taunus Daily Breeze newspaper from October 3rd regarding fledgling charter schools. A state law passed by voters in 2000 requires school districts to provide adequate facilities to charter operations. We -- in the city council last week, you had a problem with a charter school, and it was brought to the attention of the council members that there were five public schools that were empty within a nearby radius of that school. If the L.A. USD is the one breaking the law, why is the charter school in front of the city council? Additionally, I'd like to comment on two other articles that appeared in the L.A. Times. One was a column by Steve Lopez, and he noted that regarding information, the United States intelligence agencies had declared that the spread of terrorism regarding the war on terrorism in Iraq. The part that nobody seems to listen to is that this was a report done by 16 United States intelligence agencies. 16. That's pretty scary. And then another article from the L.A. Times dated 9/22, "The Pentagon's Secret Unit Didn't ID the 9/11 Leader." We had 16 intelligence agencies, they couldn't identify the 9/11 leaders, so maybe now somebody can answer this question. If the morning they didn't know anything was going on, how come in the afternoon, by the end of the day, they were able to identify the people's cars in Boston, that they were in Miami, that they had gone to flight school in Minnesota, that they had receipts from American -- the credit card receipts, that they had dinner with other people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. We're next going to go to Bruce Darian, who is out in the San Fernando Valley. Welcome, Mr. Darian.
Morning, City Council. I'd like to inform the public, I have a Newsweek magazine from April of 1973, "The Watergate Mess." It took two courageous reporters, Bob Woodward and Carl Bernstein, to bring forward what was happening in the White House, and that same -- one of the same reporters, Bob Woodward, has come forward again in reporting the denial and deception of the current administration's handling of the war situation. At the time, when Nixon was office, we had the Vietnam War going on, and it seems that we have another Vietnam situation happening before us again. With the pier construction and Malibu corruption, the Bush administration has covered up, along with the lower governments, the corrupt administration of public contracting. We have, last year, Senator Cunningham, unfortunately, not unfortunately resigning, but unfortunately, he took part in bribery. There was bribery going on at the Malibu Pier with the Sheriff's Department, but he had to resign in disgrace. This is the tip of the iceberg as to what's going on, and the Senate certainly, or Congress certainly, did not find out about this. It wasn't until a small newspaper broke the story, just as the Washington Post broke the story for the Watergate scandal. And it took the courage and determination of Mark Felt, who is the second-most highest official with the FBI. So what makes America great is the fact that we can come here and speak before our officials and the public, but that doesn't take away from the fact that there is deep-seated tyranny and despotism here, and that needs to be uncovered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darian. Our next speaker is here, Michael Corion, and then Matt Dowd. Welcome, Mr. Corion.
Yes, my name's Michael Corion, and once again, I'm here to speak to Ms. Gruel. We haven't done anything on the parking yet. City employees are allowed to park the city vehicles where they want, do what they want. If a fire breaks out and a city employee vehicle is blocking the fire hydrant, and somebody dies, you guys are going to say, "Oh, well." I'm sure the city attorney will find a loophole to get out of it. Mr. Reyes, nobody in your office has done anything in two and a half months. I called your office to try to speak to somebody, and they say, "We emailed somebody." That's what they -- that's what they tell me. Okay? You have a contractor that hasn't done anything in two months, yet you put property into REIT in your district because it's a small business owner. Okay? Those weeds are 16 feet tall. They don't get like that overnight. Okay? Point that I'm trying to make is that I try to communicate with your office, and all they do is say, "Oh, we emailed." That's all. I've never got a letter from them. They never sent me anything. Anyway, I'm here to speak. The mayor was here, and we're talking about the homeless community. I passed out -- I'm supposed to be passing these out. This was the Olympics that is sponsored by the County of Los Angeles. There were over 10,000 people there participating that were in a recovery program. Okay? Homelessness is not just an addiction. There are people that are downtown Los Angeles on Skid Row that are dual-diagnosed, that because they can't get the medicine that they need, they self-medicate themselves. Okay? We have to do more about the mental illness than we do about the addiction. The mayor's job is just to clean the sweeps, sweep the streets up, clean them up, and shove them on to Mr. Rosendahl's area, to Mr. Weisar's area, shove them somewhere else, just get them out of here, because the person who came up and spoke last week said that they were putting up tents, all the drug dealers were putting up tents. He doesn't know what he's talking about. Tell him to sit in one of those tents for a couple of hours and see how they feel.
Thank you, Mr. Corion. Matt Dowd.
Good morning, City Council. What an incredibly boring show on Channel 35 yesterday, so we've got to spice it up. The biggest thing I seen on the way in here is the billboards talking all about how AIDS is a gay disease, but that's incredibly wrong. It's really a homosexual disease. It's not lesbians who are transmitting it, I don't think. So I want to talk about that. That was the whole point of that group, was to make people talk about things. I'm sorry, but I think ordinance 4215 is a gay ordinance as well, if we're talking about Mr. President, thanks for your attention. I know I've got it, you don't have to look. So, you know, people can go around transmitting, you know, homosexual men can transmit that disease and kill people. Now, there's victims. It's a crime. It's a terrible crime, and I've spoken about it once before, but now that they've all talked about it and put it out there on the billboards, now I could be back out on the beach selling my incense, like tradition, time, Tom Labange. You know, you're letting Venice die if you're all about Los Angeles and the Griffith Museum. about Los Angeles and the Griffith Museum, then why don't you put Venice Beach back the way it was? You're killing people down there, literally. They're becoming homeless. You know, they're out there hustling people, tourists out on the boardwalk. It's not a crime, but you're making criminals out of people. So I'll use anything I can find, anything to make my point. You know, I like to be the good cop, but every now and then, ask Chief Bratton, you gotta be the bad cop and put 50 police down there and arrest people for sleeping in the tent in the daytime.
Thank you. That will close our public comment for today. If we can run through the agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to be continued. Item 16 needs to be continued to Friday so that it can be properly agendized.
All right. If there's no objection, we'll continue item 16 till the 6th of October this Friday. Are there continuations?
On item 26, there's been a request to continue that matter till Tuesday, October 10th.
Okay. Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing item number 26 until October 10th? Seeing none, we'll continue that.
And one last item on item 27, there's been a request to continue that matter two weeks to October 18th.
Okay. Colleagues, any objection to continuing item 27 for two weeks? If not, that'll be continued till the 18th. Next, I have two other continuations, are 6 and 9 to be continued? Or we'll get to that. Okay. Next items, please.
On the regular agenda, item 1 is an item notice for public hearing.
Okay. And we do have cards for that. Let's hold, call that special. Next items.
Items 2 through 7 are confirmation of building and safety liens, notice for public hearing. The department reports that item 4 may be received and filed in as much as the assessment has been paid, and they are requesting that item 6 be continued one week.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing item 6 for one week? That will be till October 11th. Seeing no objection, that will be continued. And 4, we'll move the receiving and filing of that. We do have a card for number 2, so let's call that special. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, on the balance, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And item, number 8 will carry over.
Actually, we haven't got there yet.
I'm sorry. I thought we were voting on items 1 through 9 on the, I think we just did. So why don't we? Let's reconsider 8 and 9, just to make sure. Okay. Open the roll on reconsideration of 8 and 9. Close the roll and tabulate the vote, please.
11 ayes.
Okay. Now of 8 and 9 before us.
Item 8 is the Sunset and Vine BID, notice for public hearing. And the city clerk reports the results of the tabulation was as follows. 60.53% were in favor and 39.47 were opposed.
Mr. City Attorney, we, as I was informed, yesterday was the day for public hearing, and I closed the public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. So unless there's somebody who moves, there is a card, but unless somebody moves for public hearing, that has been done. So we will open the roll on item 8, unless there's anybody from the council wishes to be heard. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And that will carry over?
The ordinance will carry over one week.
Okay. One week. Next item.
Item 9 is a zoning appeal notice for public hearing, and the applicant consents to a continuance to October 18th.
Okay. Is there any objection to that continuance until the 18th of October, colleagues? Item 9. Seeing none, that will be continued till then. Next items, please.
Items 10 through 31 are items for which public hearings have been held, with the exception of item 16, 26, and 27 that were already continued.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials? Ms. Grohl?
Just item number 31, we want to move the budget and finance report.
You wanted to refer it back to budget and finance?
No, we want to move the budget and finance.
Move the budget and finance, sorry. Okay. Ms. Grohl moves the budget and finance report. I assume Mr. Park seconds that, so we will put that on the table. Any specials, colleagues? There's a motion required on item 30 as well.
Yes, there are two reports on the file. One was to note and file, and the first one was directing the department to actually do something.
And that second one was from the Renew Committee?
The second one was from the Ad hoc Renew LA.
Okay. Mr. Smith, did you want to move that recommendation on number 30? Okay. I'll second that. So that'll be the motion on item 30. Any other specials, colleagues? Yes, Mr. 30, sorry?
25.
25 from Mr. Rosendahl? Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Most of those are approved, though 10 through 14 will go over as their ordinances, and we don't have 12 members. Okay. Next items, please. 28, if there's no objection, we will send forth with. Next items, please.
Items 32 through 57 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials? We do have cards on 46, 52, 56, and 57. So we'll call those special for the cards. Any other specials, colleagues? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
The ordinances will be carried over, and the rest are approved. Next items, please.
Items 58 through 62 are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the closed session items on the desk.
That would take you back to the items called special, and item 1 was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. We have item number 1 before us. Like to ask the following people to come forward. Catherine Leland is our first speaker, and then Candido Morris. Sorry? Catherine Leland? Catherine Leland is first. Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Leland. I am here representing the Central City Association. CCA is a business organization located in downtown LA. We have 350 business members who employ more than 350,000 people in the LA region. I'm here to express CCA support for the proposed water rate increase. Though this will amount to a fairly significant rate increase for the business community, CCA believes the increase is both fair and necessary. Phasing out the test bill subsidy, which is part of the proposal impacting the business community most, should have been done about a decade ago, honestly. The proposal to phase out the subsidy is reasonable and structured in a way to minimize any undue impacts. These revenues, along with increased revenues from other parts of the proposal, will go towards necessary infrastructure improvements and meeting important federal and state requirements. These improvements will ensure that Los Angeles continues to receive high-quality water service. DWP rates are among the most favorable of any large municipality. CCA believes DWP is making every effort to provide high-quality service at the best possible price. In fact, DWP's proposal of a 5.5 revenue increase over two years is actually less than the independent consultant's recommendation of 7.4%. CCA supports the proposal and thanks DWP for their continued hard work. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Candido Morris? I'm sorry. Will you give us your name for the record, ma'am?
Soledad Sotres Garcia. Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. I am here to concur with the, with the commissioners, DWP commissioners' action to pray and to praise DWP's outstanding rate increase outreach to neighborhood councils and ratepayers, which should be a model for sanitation to follow. I support and encourage that DWP have an independent audit report for the fiscal year 0788 as a follow-up on the BWG recommendations in order to justify the 07 and beyond rate increases. And I certainly would appreciate and recommend that DWP's bill not include sanitation and the 10% increase by the, by the city. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Candido Morris?
Mr. President, council members, I've been here before you in regards to DWP issues. I first of all want to thank the, the great workers of DWP, because for over 25 years, we've added a million people to this great city, and yet we're using about the same amount of water. That is unbelievable. That, that takes a lot of effort, and that's credit to the Department of Water and Power. In regards to the increase, it's unbelievable. Just a couple of years ago, we were talking about an 18% increase, then 11% increase, and now we're down to 2.75 on the water end of it. My question, though, is has the department done everything it can to cut costs? Not just in the water area, but throughout the department. We have probably the finest commission with President Dehigh now heading the Department of Water and Power Commission. They are doing an outstanding job. They've gone through it, through the budget, and done a great job. But I'm asking you, Mr. President, council members, can you imagine the headlines tomorrow? The city wakes up and it reads, "City Council Says No To Increase." For me, that would indicate that you folks deserve a third term because you're watching out for the people of this great city. Ask them to come back. Ask them the hard questions. Have you done everything to protect the ratepayers? The ratepayers own the Department of Water and Power. And I'm asking you to stand up for the ratepayers. Thank you, Mr. President, council members.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Zuma Dogg.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I think it'd be nice maybe if public comment was moved to the end because I'd like to hear what these people have to say about it. It might answer some questions. But regarding this, I would just like to note, I was just on the phone, you might have seen me on the phone talking about this. They just wanted to bring to attention that, you know, this is gonna be bad for business. It's like, yeah, we're raising taxes for business. And there's plenty of other places where this money would, can come from if we do need improvements. And maybe Lord Chicks watching, yeah, yeah, Lord Chick, y'all, why don't you run an audit on DWP a little bit? Because they got plenty of money. It's DWP, man. It's like the biggest windfall money-making corporation, almost as much as Nike. So run an audit on them. And we do have so much cash for things, it's being wasted, like a lot of these special event fee waivers. So all I'm saying, let's make sure they're not abusing money. It's bad for business, but we do need the improvements. And I'll yield the rest of my time so we can get this fine presentation started. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dowd is our last speaker.
Otherwise known as Deep South 81. This one, this is a clean item, you know, water and power. It's basically increasing some rates, from what I can see. So for the people who can afford water and power to keep clean, I have noticed here the fiscal impact statement. And I just want to point this out to the EAA, because the DWP, they got their pay rise, and now their rates go up, and there's a, there's an increase in the fiscal year of $17 million of revenue. So, you know, the EAA, I don't know where you're, where you're hiding right now, but there's $35 million over the next two years going into the DWP. So why don't you hijack some of that money, because everyone loves hijacking things around here? Thank you.
That closes our public comment. We now have Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Rosendahl, and Councilmember Hahn. And of course, we have department staff here available for any questions or presentations. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to commend Department of Water and Power for the way this was brought forward. Historically, Water and Power, for decades and decades, brought over to the council its recommendations with no, no really anything to back it up and prove it. And this council, we always just approved, pretty much, well, not always, but almost always approved what came over from Water and Power without really analyzing it. And we brought forward, two years ago, with Mr. Curtis and I brought forward a proposal to say to you, before you ask for rate increases, we want to see a economic analysis of the proposal. So, Mr. Dean, if you would explain to me what came out of that and how these numbers came to us today. And hold my time, please.
Well, basically, about this time last year, even, actually, July of last year, proposed a 3.8 and 3, a 3.8% increase for both years. We went through, as you indicated, the CAO and the CLA hired Barrington Wellsley to do an independent review. They came up and basically recommended approval of those, those rate increases, and had a series of recommendations for us to do, notwithstanding those, the recommendations to proceed with the revenue changes. Then, the, that was concluded in April. Our agreement with neighborhood councils was that we would have a 90-day period of time in which we explained that to the, to the neighborhood councils, and we spent those 90 days in every part of the city explaining the reasons for the increase. Simultaneous with that was a review by the commission and by our, by my office of the budget. Through a series of changes to the budget, we ascertained that we could proceed with 2.75 and 2.75 increases, which is roughly a percent less than what we had planned on doing nine months before. That was subsequent to the 90 days that the neighborhood councils used to review the rate increase. The commission adopted the 2.75 for this year and next year. And then, as per Proposition 218, there was a 45-day period of time in which we sent a notice to every property owner in the city that what we were proposing, et cetera. We are in the process, either having concluded, either have implemented or in the process of implementing all the Barrington Wellsley recommendations. Some of them are not, cannot be, for example, one was the test bill subsidy, which was alluded to in some of the public comment, which essentially is, is to bring both the commercial industrial and residential cost per gallon or cost per acre foot the same. And that was one of the recommendations, and we have concluded with that. Some of the other recommendations are more timely, take more time. The information technology issues that raised by Barrington Wellsley are certainly problems that we need to resolve, but they're not ones you can do overnight. And quite frankly, if you try to do them overnight, you're gonna fail. And we have failed in the past, and I don't intend to fail in the future. So that's the, kind of the long and the short of where we are. Main things that are driving the increase are, quite frankly, environmental issues. We are, there's a whole issue of water quality, closing the, or putting covers over reservoirs and related water treatment issues that are quite expensive, quite capital-intensive. And we have, over the next five years, a very extensive capital program in order to accomplish those. And I think that's the, the main issue.
And I think as you talk about covering the reservoirs, and how many of those are you gonna cover? The reservoirs?
I'll have the water system.
Most? Well, I think it's important to point out, because this has been identified by our LAPD and the terrorist division as one of the biggest.
Yeah. It's both a water quality and a security issue.
Security issue.
Both of them.
Our water reservoirs, all here in the basin, are open, could be easily contaminated, and has been identified as one of the highest.
Right. You have to be concerned about both the terrorists and the birds.
Yeah, and the birds, particularly around Sunshine Canyon. I'll bring that up again.
How many reservoirs?
Jim McDaniel, Chief Operating Officer of the Water System, there's still six open reservoirs left. We have taken interim security measures so that we feel that, you know, we've got that situation addressed from a security standpoint on an interim basis. But the long-term solution is these things need to either be taken out of service and replaced or covered.
Now, let me address the neighborhood councils. One of the things we added to the ordinance a couple of years ago on rates was that there be a neighborhood council review. You mentioned that. What was the response to neighborhood councils?
I think the representative of the committee, all the committees testified, I think, for the most part, supportive. They, in some instances, wanted to go ahead with one year and not two years. And some of them were still concerned about the transfer.
Okay. And, and on that last point, I wanted to address the two-year versus one-year. I think their argument is, and it makes some sense, is we can give you one year now, it makes sense, the numbers are there, people seem to be approving of that, we've had plenty of public process. But on the second year, they want to tie it to the Barrington report and things you need to do. Would you address that?
My, first off, the, the way the charter is, this is an up-and-down vote for, for the two years, and.
Repeat that for everybody in the council. This is an up-and-down vote.
This is an up-and-down vote. You, you can either reject it or accept it. If you reject it, it goes back to the commission.
Okay.
If it goes back to the commission, the, to turn around a, just a one-year, would take months. You have your 45 days, you have a whole host of things, one. Two, my understanding, and you can ask the CAO and the CLA, but my understanding is they intend to do Barrington Wellsley or an outside review each year, and they will proceed with that, follow on to the last one, almost immediately upon the conclusion of this issue. Second, thirdly, that some of these issues, as I indicated, that Barrington Wellsley raised are not issues that, that can be resolved in one year. The IT and, and some of the, we have, I think, proceeded with the, one of the issues was the, kind of the workforce review of statistics and, and standards, et cetera. We have put that in place to begin it. We haven't finished it. We have a unit that we added to the budget in order to do exactly that. It will take time to implement, and we will be doing that in both the water system and the power system. So, and quite frankly, it is, and I explained that to some of the neighborhood councils, it is important. it is important that, I believe the multi-year provides the opportunity for annual review and to be accountable, but gives us time to do what we're being held accountable to do.
Okay. How does accountability come in then, in the second year? Let's say you don't achieve those goals, you don't follow through, what rights do we have as a council or commission then to go back and say, "Wait a minute, we don't need second year because you're not doing what we asked you to do"?
Well, you can always change that. I think that the things wouldn't be that quickly done, but I think that...
But we want to see progress.
We would put on notice, and that we weren't making it, and when these are done annually, then I think that it is, both from a commission, council, and mayor's viewpoint, the report will tell everybody what they think, how we're progressing. And also, I think that we've demonstrated our relationship with neighborhood councils and other organizations, the willingness to go out and explain our position, what we're doing and how we're doing it, and we intend to continue that.
Okay. I think you've done a good job of creating a relationship that never existed with the people of LA, and I commend you on that. Finally, have you issued a checklist on the Barrington report on timeframes, elements, what we're looking towards, so you can say, neighborhood councils, this is what we plan to accomplish in the next 12 months, this is the next 12, et cetera? So, they know that, they understand that?
I believe so, and not we'll send something out to...
Okay. I think that just needs to be clarified so people can say, next year, that we awarded you that second-year rate increase in good faith, and that the department is keeping that faith. And if not, then there needs to be a recourse. So, that's what my base concern.
Right. Just going down real quickly, just a list of some of the things, BWG, they talked about $20 million of potential revenue requirements. We reduced from 3.8 to 2.75, or reduced the budget someplace in the neighborhood of $15 million through a variety of ways. They recommended that we change the test bid subsidy, that's what's before you today. They didn't believe we had done a good job of having water and power sides look at what is going on in the joint system. We had, both in the general manager's review and in the submissions review, all people present at the same time, they each reviewed their own budgets and bought off on those things. The, I think that we have begun the, kind of the mindset of looking at cost control in a different fashion, and I think that the last year, both through the actions of the general manager and the actions of the commission, set that in place. It is a concept that has to be looked at with results over a period of time, but I think that has been done. The workforce management practice, as I said before, we put together a group, and they are now proceeding to do that department-wide. There was an issue relative to Owens Lake. We are in mediation with Great Basins currently to try to work out some mutually agreeable solution to that issue. And those are the key recommendations of Barrington Wellsley.
Thank you very much. And for the listening audience, I just want to remind everybody that three years ago, DWP came over and asked for an 18% increase. It was the council that cut it to 11, but said, "We want fiscal controls put in," which Mr. Dean, men's CLA helped me write. And those fiscal controls, the time DWP said, "We want a 7%," and a 7% in the second and third years, came back after those controls were put in at a little over 3, and now down to 2.75. So, Mr. Dean, I don't know whether you're happy with what you helped me do or not, but I think the people of LA have certainly got, certainly an open process, they can now look at and say, "We understand it, it now makes sense." So, thank you for helping me.
The time I supported, and I think that the reason is, and I still believe this, is that the, being transparent and letting people know what's going on is a lot easier to explain than not doing it. And I think both the neighborhood councils and that the Barrington Wellsley approach does that.
I think it's, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, and then Ms. Hahn, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Zide. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, gentlemen. If I'm reading this right, residential is going up five bucks from 321 to the average bill to 326, and then '07, it's going up seven bucks. Is that right?
Yes, the average.
So, 12 bucks more. We've got to be clear that we're going to be charged.
In the two years, at the conclusion of the two years.
Outreach. Did you go to the 11th district? Did you talk to my residents and neighborhood councils and stuff like that?
We went to every neighborhood council that would listen to us, and we went to, we had, we had meetings in the...
Hold my time.
Both with neighborhood councils and with the Energy Commission Committee in the San Fernando Valley, downtown, in South LA, in San Pedro, throughout the city.
Because I must say, I have not heard a lot of screams, because I guess you have been out there doing it, from people, and they understand the direction. But let me ask you a couple of questions about where the money's going to go in the increase. There are two things it says here, ongoing costs of water quality and infrastructure-related improvements. Explain them.
Basically, the ongoing infrastructure is replacement of the mains, make sure there's not leaks, and that we are replacing the infrastructure. It is, gets old, and with the, for example, we've just, I think this year, we will have completed the cement lining of all the major mains in order to extend their life. That was not a cheap endeavor. Also, an infrastructure that is not replacement, per se, but as we stated before, there is the covering of the reservoirs and trunk lines in order to provide for, there's a change in the way that we have to ensure the water has been treated. That change requires a very massive capital investment of how we put the chemicals to treat the water, and that, those capital investments are just enormous.
Let me ask you this about bottled water. This is your water, correct?
Yes.
Where is this picked up from? Where do you go to get this water, in terms of the pipes? What part of the system, infrastructure, do you get this water from?
We get the water from right at the LA Aqueduct filtration plant, where the aqueduct comes into the city.
Okay, so at that point, at that filtration plant, this water is the best. It says LA's best, I drink it, I love it, right?
Yes.
Right.
But by the time it comes to my tap, I don't drink it anymore. I got bottled water, I spent a lot of money on bottled water. Why do I do that? And am I wrong on that?
I don't know why you do it, and yes, you're wrong.
Well, no, there's two answers. Here, come on.
No, I'm dead serious. You know, the, there is no reason, there is no reason in this city to drink bottled water than tap water. I do not, in this city, I don't, we meet every standard. It is safe water, and it is good water. And in fact, it's good tasting water. Now, if you want to drink bottled water, that's your privilege.
Oh, well, I'd rather not, but people are always fighting you about the smell, taste...
People, my view is that the taste is at least as good, if not better, than bottled water. The other thing about bottled water, except for the water you're drinking right there, is bottled water doesn't have any standards, whether it's a soft drink or something else, whatever they put in there is not a standard. We have to meet federal and state standards, health standards, and there is no reason to drink bottled water. Now, if you're in your automobile and there's not a tap available, I can, I'll buy off on that. But you're incorrect in doing it, but if you want to do it, it's your business and it costs you more.
Now, I wanted you to do that on the record, because a lot of people are confused and concerned. The second issue you're saying here is Owens Valley dust mitigation. Bring us up to date on that.
Owens Valley, the situation is that, due to state law, we're obligated to correct the dust issue on the lake. As a result of the diversion of the water from the Owens River, the size of the lake has diminished to practically nothing. It has created dust in the Owens Valley. That dust is a health issue, and so we're in the process, through a variety of techniques and approaches, to eliminate that dust.
How much money have we spent so far?
Over $400 million.
Is there a cap? Is there a commitment that we're somehow going to stop throwing that money at it? I mean, how much are we going to end up spending?
Well, we're, as I said, we're responsible for meeting the standard. And what we're trying to do, and the best we can, is to meet that standard in the most cost-effectively we can. We're currently in mediation with Great Basins, but the fact of the matter is that we have the responsibility, because of our actions relative to the Owens River, that we have to fix that lake, so it does...
Do we know what we're doing in fixing it? Because once it was 150 million, then it was 200 million, now it's $400 million. Do we have any real sense about how much money we're going to do and when it'll be all right, or it will be an ongoing major expense?
Well, it is, the 400-plus million dollars is the capital expense. There is going to be, even given the existing area that we have mitigated, the ongoing cost of that is roughly $40 million, 20 of which is actually operations on the lake, and the other 20 million dollars is the additional cost of water that we're not getting from the Owens Valley. So, there's a $40 million ongoing cost to what we've done so far. I do not, we have not finished. There is no cap financially on it. Only thing we're doing is, we're trying to work out as best we can in cooperation with, in this mediation, which is confidential, but this mediation with Great Basins to try to resolve our responsibilities in the most cost-effective manner that we possibly can.
Well, I look forward to some closed session or some update at a certain point, because obviously, there's a lot of money...
It will be very quickly, I hope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. And if some of my questions have been answered, I apologize, I've been having side conversations. First of all, I do want to congratulate the department, particularly in the process with the neighborhood councils. I am amazed that we're here today proposing even a slight rate increase, and neighborhood councils seem to be relatively pleased with the process. I would say that our Department of Water and Power has the best relationship with neighborhood councils so far going with all of our departments. I would urge all of our departments to follow this example. When I think where we came from, the first time we had the proposed rate hike with DWP and the outcry and, you know, the very angry residents, because they felt like we were still doing business the way we used to be, which was just to sort of rush through a rate increase without consulting, without showing good cause. And I really want to thank Greg Smith and his leadership, bringing forth the idea that before we even propose a rate hike, we have a third-party audit that we share with the public and give the public an opportunity to understand. I think there's a lot of us that always felt like, if we make the case for why we do things, the public may not always, you know, agree or like it, but it shows that we are transparent, it shows that we are open, and it gives, you know, at least it gives a reason why we're doing things. So, I really want to applaud you for doing that. And maybe you could share a little bit about how that process has been, just, you know, on camera, so other departments can pay attention and neighborhood councils can understand exactly what happened. Hold my time, please.
Well, it's interesting, I actually think it's been both, I think, having the outside review as a third party has helped in explaining things and raising issues that we might not have otherwise wanted to raise, quite frankly. But on the other hand, I think that the whole process has been, nobody particularly wants to pay more for a commodity they're getting today at a lower price. And I, you know, we didn't expect unbounded enthusiasm for paying more for water, for electricity, or anything else. But I do believe that in the interaction between us and the neighborhood councils, particularly, and also all the public hearings we had with the Energy Committee of the council, that the public at least understood why we, what were the things that were driving us to do what we had to do, and that there were payoffs for them, and it was a, I think, a very productive thing for both the department employees and for the neighborhood councils to get a better feel for what we do at the department and their ability to complain about certain things. And sometimes it wasn't about the rates. Sometimes other issues would come up that were bothering them more than that, and we were able to resolve some of those. And it's been, I think, a very healthy relationship.
You know, and let me just, I know Candido spoke about, you know, what are we doing to protect the ratepayers? And that's clearly important, the ratepayers own DWP, and...
No.
Well...
The citizens.
The citizens, the citizens.
The ratepayers pay for the commodity, the citizens of Los Angeles.
Right, but the citizens own, well, the citizens are the ratepayers. Citizens are the ratepayers. But I know there's a lot to that, and I'm sure you can't answer that in 100 words or less, but I will tell you what's important to me, and I think you've spoken to that, but speak briefly to the safety of our water, because that is what's important, I think, to everyone who turns on the faucet. What is, what are we doing to ensure the safety and the quality of the water supply in the city of Los Angeles? And you've spoken a little bit about security, let's hear that again.
Well, we spend an enormous amount of money on security to ensure that people do not get into the water supply and do anything to it. We spend constant testing of the water at, both at the, at every phase of the delivery of the water. As I'm fond of saying, the price of water is actually free, it's the transportation and the treatment that is so costly. The water flows, and we then treat it, and the, there is a very rigorous process that we go through. If we cannot meet that, then we put people on notice. We go out in the community and say, you know, you have a boiled water, if there's a, and we also, if there's something in the water that is not harmful, but yet has some discoloration or some odor to it, we also notify people of that. We spend a lot of money and a lot of effort to make sure it's safe. We also spend a lot of money to make sure that it's cost-effective. And that sounds a little disingenuous, perhaps, but we are very conscious, and we will compare our rates and our delivery with any utility in this state or in this country. Our cost of electricity and water are more than competitive. We are very cost-conscious. We do not, our employees are well-paid, and they deserve to be well-paid, because they do a hell of a job. When the transformers start going out, or the mains start leaking, or the water needs to be treated and chested, our employees go out there and do that job. They climb those poles, thank God, I've always said that for my benefit in the electric system, I don't climb the poles, and I don't get into those situations in the water system. But they are people who, every day, day in and day out, make sure that the water supply is both there and safe.
Well, I'll tell you, a lot of people drink bottled water, but when I have an opportunity, whether it's in my own home or in a restaurant, because in the city of Los Angeles, I always order the tap water, because I think it's safe and it's good. And one more thing, how are you letting people know about this rate increase, besides a bill stuffer?
We have notified neighborhood councils, we have put information in newspapers, and as I said earlier, in conformance with 218, we presented, we have a document that went out to notify every property owner in the city of Los Angeles. We have put it on our website, we have put it, then about it? Any way we could.
Carrier pigeons?
Pardon me?
Carrier pigeons? No?
No, we keep those off the reservoirs.
Thank you. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you. Always love it, Dean, we miss that, Ron. I just wanted to comment, and my colleagues have asked some of the questions I would have asked you, more so to educate the public, but I participated, as did Jan Perry and Mr. Garcetti, in the hearings, both in the San Fernando Valley and in South Los Angeles on a Saturday. The sad thing was, there weren't a lot of people there. But we did have an opportunity, and I know it's been discussed about your relationship with the neighborhood councils and the MOU group, and really having that feedback, and we heard from some of those neighborhood councils their support of this water rate increase, which, again, no one likes to stand up and say, "I support that water rate increase." But that's what we're doing today, and I think one of the points being made, at the time you had your presentation, it was at 3.75%, and you're now down to 1.6. I want to say that again, it was originally 3.75 and went down to 1.6. I'm not sure if anyone asked this question, but how did you get from those two points? What kinds of things did you...
Well, actually, it was 3.8, and it went to 2.75 across the board. Now, the two, that decrease was, in part, we cut a lot of the expenses, we went through and went, and cut back in the water system substantially in some of the, not the things that provide the supply, or not the things that provide the treatment or the safety, but memberships and all kinds of things to cut back on that issue. that issue, one. Two, there were some expenses that we were able to shift to a capital expenditure, which allowed us to pay for those expenses over a longer period of time. And that reduced our operating expense on a, on a year-to-year basis. The 2.75 is, the test bill subsidy, the residential part of the bill is less than the commercial. Commercial is actually more than 2.75 because historically, when the, in about 12 years ago, when the council made...
Sorry, hold my time.
Made the, the rate changes due to the Blue Ribbon Committee, the business, the, some commercial industrial counts were given a cap. This eliminates that cap, so everybody pays roughly the same on a per gallon basis or on a per acre foot basis. But we went through, really, four or five months of budget review, both internal to the General Manager's Office and then through, the commission went, I had five day-long meetings on, on the budget and we went item by item. And that's the way...
And I think it says in here that you're going to report back in six months on the recommendations in the BWG report. And one of the concerns raised, I think it was in committee by Joe Vitti and others, was would we still continue to have a BWG report? They wanted it annually. You've recommended biannually. Is that correct?
No. Actually, and two things. One is, I'm pleased with an annual report, but realize that that BWG or that outside review is triggered by the council and the mayor and the CAO and the CLA or the administrators. I'm, it's not, I get, the Water and Power gets to pay for it, but I don't initiate it. So, I think that the, my understanding, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think both the CAO and the CLA intend to do it on an annual basis and we're willing to participate in that, but that's their call, not mine.
Okay. So, Jerry is shaking his head and so I would assume that would, I'm not sure when that will come back, but there is an interest. Again, the, the data and information that was provided in that report was really the basis for our ability to move forward on this, this issue and give some credibility to the financial situation over at DDP at independent review.
Yeah, it is our intention to do annually and actually, we're going to get started immediately after this action to, to continue with the next review.
Okay. And the only, the, the last question I want to ask as a valley resident and representing the valley is that tier one, tier two, if you could explain how that is difference, because, different, because obviously it is, it is hotter in the valley and therefore we use a lot more water sometimes on, to, to be able to take care of the various needs.
Again, going back that 12 years ago, there was a Blue Ribbon Committee on water rates and the, basically the water rates, historically there were like service charges, et cetera. All fixed charges per bill were removed. It's strictly on the commodity. Above a certain amount of water, kind of an average amount of water, then the rate goes up. It also, the rates, it's probably the most complex rate structure of any water utility in, in the country because it also, there's some, there is a, a factor for climate, a factor for the size of the, of the property and also the amount of water that is used.
Family size. Pardon me? Family size.
And family size. And those all work together, but, but basically if you use a cer, above a certain amount, the concept is that the, the, at the higher end, it's more dear because water is a scarce resource and, and to provide for more water is more costly at the, at the marginal level. And we want to send the message to, to people to use as less, as little as they can. But we have taken into account that some of them live in hot climates, have large families and have large lots.
Okay. Thank you. And I, again, I appreciate that because that, the question is asked frequently.
Yes, no, it's...
As we're looking at the, the citywide. And so, I just want to thank the department for looking deep and making some of those changes and listening to the neighborhood councils through the MOU process and, and your acceptance of the once-a-year BWG and, and working with the CLA to do that. And we look forward to a six-month review.
Well, just, you said educate the neighborhood councils. Actually, I'd like to say that it was a two-way street.
Yes. I'm certain of that. I'm certain of that. So, thank you very much, Ms. President.
You're welcome, Ms. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to thank Department of Water and Power for their efficiencies and the due diligence and connecting with the community and getting us to a point where we talk about accountability. But also want to thank you for your support in putting in place and anchoring down a master plan for the river and how we're looking at that whole concept and how we look at leveraging those resources to create a multiplicity of benefits. Well, my question is one in which you see many of the assets that are controlled by Department of Water and Power. See property in, when you look at the operations, the plants, the location next to the river in and of itself. As we go to the master plan and we go through this issue of what we're going to do 15, 20 years from now, our ability to understand the shift of trying to look at open space, waterways, what they call polishing the water, stormwater harvesting, is that a direction you see the culture of Department of Water and Power moving towards? Is there anything in the shops that are allowing us prepare in that light where we look at these assets in a different way? And I like to take advantage of this opportunity being...
Yeah, I noticed, I noticed that.
All at the table now, so I thought I'd ask. Please hold my time.
Two things. One is that we were pleased to participate in the master plan for the LA River. I don't think any department of the city has more of its history tied to, to a particular thing as we do to the Los Angeles River. And accordingly, the second point is that we will do the best we can, given financial constraints and other constraints, and operational constraints, to do as best we can to free up as much property if, if that's at all feasible. Realizing that there is both economics and operational concerns, we have customers that are spread throughout the, the city and the resources need to be close to, if there is a, an outage, to be able to get to that outage or also the ability to, as I said before, we have most of the, our, not all most, but we have a large part of our testing ability in, in, in some of those areas as well. We're looking at it. We're seeing if there is an alternative. A lot of free space, or not free space, but even space is not readily available, but we're looking to see what we could do.
Well, when we, when we look at the notion of underused or dormant land, being that many of these facilities were designed back in the 20s and 30s, it plays a very real role within the function, operation of power and water. But I look at other cities and how they're able to leverage those locations to actually create revenue. It becomes an actual revenue generator. When you look at the corridors underneath the power lines, to what extent does that become an element of complementing a scenario where you create new revenue with the airspace that's not being used by some of these locations? Now, granted, I know you can't build under the power lines. That doesn't make sense. That's not what I'm suggesting, but I'm talking about their juxtaposition to other parcels that lie dormant. And it's that type of thinking that I'm hoping we could push and promote. There's this, oh, that is, you know, we got, we get stuck in the pipeline at the end of the factory mentality because that's very efficient. You can dictate, you can essentially predict what's going to happen. You have the watershed approach, which is a more softer, more natural approach, which tends to be out of our radar because that's not how we usually do business. And again, I, I'm hoping that as we look at the re-entitlement of our corridor, we look at the community's vision, that we could actually find opportunities to create revenue. What struck me, Mr. Dean, is that I've been to Tempe, I've been to other cities, and the engineers there and the administrators tell me, "Did you know that Los Angeles has the patent for the rubber dams? That they invented that particular tool?" But they're using it to create waterways in dormant and dead areas and created value along the river fronts and actually zoned it so they can have open space housing and commercial in a dead spot in the middle of the desert. I'm using Tempe as the example. So, I'm excited because, one, you invested in the, in the master plan, but more so, as we look at the vision of the community, how we use, that's an example, the rubber dam, to create waterways in the channel, to create water bodies that can filtrate, clean the water and create an amenity and a revenue generator. And that's what I think is going to be the future for the city, given that's our last frontier, so to speak.
Well, I believe we've demonstrated our willingness to work and I think one of the, I know the mayor has a, an objective for both, for all departments of the city, especially mine, I think, to better utilize the land that they do for, for other purposes. I'm very interested in the land that is underneath the transmission lines to be used more effectively for the communities, at the same time being able to allow our crews, if there is a problem, to get in there and fix it. So, it's a...
Absolutely.
Yeah. And so, with those two objectives in mind, I think we will, we'll make a lot of progress in the next few years.
And just in closing, as I look at the clock and we got our term limits, these are big scenario issues, big picture issues. The more we put in place and institutionalize it, the more likely it'll be less of a political whim and a very real change in the quality of life. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, it's nice to hear some good public comments about the department that you are the general manager. I know that in the past, people weren't given complimentary statements, but obviously you've done a great amount of outreach. Concern I have is about the San Fernando Valley and a number of us represent people in the valley where we have large parcels of land. The ratio of water that's used out there with the increase in rates, it affects a lot of people differently. People in the metropolitan area, people on the west side where it's cooler versus the parcels in the San Fernando Valley. I know that we have one system in place where you have a separate meter for irrigation. I don't know how much we publish that, or publicize that to the community. Do we have any kind of program with this increase for seniors, for people with large lots, people that can afford that increase? Because it is going to be a considerable amount of dollars because of the water usage, because of the parcels that are occupied in that area of the San Fernando Valley and with the extreme heat that they suffer that other city don't have to deal with.
We have basically left those relationships the way they've been for the last 12 years, the, the first percentages. We have provided for low income, more low-income relief.
More, more in this?
In this...
In this increase?
Subsidy to recover low income. It can be adjusted up or down. Right. We've provided for a subsidy for low income, but...
And what about seniors?
Not just low income at this point.
What about a low-income senior?
Low-income...
So, you've got to be a low-income senior to qualify.
Right. And the ability to change those subsidies that we, we see fit and, and need to. But the other, the structure, the basic structure goes back 12 years ago to the, to the Blue Ribbon Committee. We have not tampered with that at all. We left that in place. However, as the increases, given what we're faced...
If you can hold my time, Mr. President.
Like...
Thank you.
Basically, even for the high temperature and large lots is on, for the two years, 2% each.
Well, I'm looking at the average residential tier one, 144, a high-temperature zone, 434. And tier two, and then tier three goes from 144 on a, to 582. So, when you look at the large temperature, the high-temperature zones in the large areas, you're talking about many more dollars paid by the person who's going to be paying that bill.
Right. But a mark, a relatively small increase of 2% each year.
But 144 to 434 on your average. 144, tier one versus the, I'm talking about residential component.
Right.
I show 434 in the, the larger lot with the high-temperature zone, which the consumption would be 144 versus 434. So, obviously much more water used.
Yeah. I think the situation there is that the, that it's not just, the, the problem in that instance is it's not that they're, they're in a large lot or in a high-temperature zone, they're just use a lot of water.
But why do they use a lot of water? Because a large lot, more vegetation, and if you've got a small lot or you're an apartment where you don't have a lot to maintain, and we want to maintain the, the curb appeal of the parcels out there, we don't want to see just dirt where the lawn vegetation would be.
I agree.
Or weeds growing. So, the concern I have is, what do we offer the folks out there that are on fixed incomes, the seniors? I know that there's the, the folks that are hurting for dollars just to pay the bills. Now, 2% may not seem like a lot, but when you come into the area where instead of using 144, you're using 434, that 2% is a big difference because of their rate's going to be much higher because obviously they're using more. But then, if they don't water the lawn, if they don't water the plants, now you're going to have what the valley is, is a desert, looking like a desert. And we don't want it to look like a desert.
I don't disagree.
Even the people from the, the beach agree and they don't have to worry about the heat down at the beach. But I know you've got a program in place for low income. We don't seem to have another program to, to promote the dual-meter system that we have available for the large lots. Maybe we need to do some more outreach in those areas of the city of Los Angeles where we can promote that. And I know it's available. I don't know how the cost, but I know that it's available. Many people aren't aware of it, to cut down because that sewer and sanitation service charge is connected to how much water you're taking in, even though it's not going in the sewer, it's going in the yard. We need to publish more about that because most people aren't aware of that.
Let me look at that and we'll put together a program to let people know.
Because they'll save, they'll save money on the back end because it's going in the yard versus, because everything you put in, every wa, every ounce of water that comes out of that faucet, you're going to be charged, the sewer and sanitation charge, unless you have the other component.
That's why we offered the second meter some years ago.
But, but, but we haven't updated to say, "Hey, this is still available. This is the cost, et cetera." And if it's a low income, if it's a senior, maybe we could help offset that cost if they need to do that.
Okay.
So, just assist them as much as we can.
We'll take a look at it and we'll get back to you.
But, but I commend you for doing the outreach. Obviously, the neighborhood council is very supportive, the comments we've heard today, unlike the past when everybody was complaining and this chamber would be packed with people who were very upset about it. And we got Candido, who's a great guy, but we've, we've obviously done additional outreach and education for the community. But if you can look into that to help those folks out.
I will.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Well, we have the increase before us, so nobody else wishes to be heard? Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you all very much. It was a good and informative discussion. Let's go to the next item, please.
And the ordinance will go over in one week.
Yes, and I just wanted to state on the record that the public hearing had been closed on that. We did have a public hearing on, on that as well today. That'll carry over since there are not 12 members here. Next item, please.
Item two is called special, four cards from the public.
Oh, we, the card was from Solidad Sotres Garcia, but that was for the previous item, I think. Is she still here? I know she did give testimony in the previous one. Okay. So, we'll, we'll make sure that gets into the record for number one. We'll close the public hearing on two. We can open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 25 is called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl? Item 25.
President, if we could ask the folks to come up and talk on this, Mercedes, Marquez and others. Hold my time.
Will you press your button real quick? Then I'll start it and hold it.
Yeah.
You got it?
Come on up.
Good morning.
Fill us in on what this is about.
With today's action, a historic combination of agencies, including the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles, the Redevelopment Agency, the Department of Water and Power and the Los Angeles Housing Department have come together to fund the Permanent Supportive Housing Program. We're asking for approval today so that we can go forward and fund the first $50 million in NOFAS. It is historic because it would, will for the first time provide both capital financing and operating subsidies in the form of project-based Section 8 in one application. Permanent supportive housing is a three-legged stool. It requires capital, operating and services dollars. With this effort, the city is coming forward with the first two legs, those that we control, and then look forward to working with the county for providing the services. This program is particularly focused on the chronically homeless. So, in this program, if one were going to serve homeless adults, single adults, we would require that a minimum of 35% and a maximum of 60% actually focus in... other kind of problem in the housing from the outset. That means that we've also done some design guidelines in this program, which will, for the first time, require us to take a look at what permanent means, which for us will mean that each unit will have a bathroom and a kitchen. So efficiency units, understanding that the goal here for the chronically homeless is that they, for the most part, will always need our help, and that success is to keep them in the housing. And that will alleviate pressure on police department, on ambulance services, emergency rooms, all other kinds of emergency services by keeping them in the housing permanently and understanding that they have a home. That is very important because in the past, we have not done that. And this takes one very big step forward, both on design and on services provision, as well as the operating and the capital that is needed. That in a nutshell is our program.
How many folks do you think will be served by this particular allocation at this time?
We believe that this particular allocation will bring between 300 and 350 units, but all with Project Based Section 8, so all focused at individuals earning below 35% of AMI.
And so as we go forward, the mayor's committed another 50 million, so it's a total of $100 million for homelessness. This will kick it off. It's a historic moment.
It is a historic moment. In fact, if this is approved today and the mayor is able to sign it, we will actually have the NOFA up on our website and available for funding on Friday.
And then the multiplier effect, you put the money in, other things come its way. Explain that aspect of it.
Well, the idea is this, like state funding and other local programs that we do, is a leveraged program. So the notion is that for every city dollar that we put in, we expect, permanent supportive housing is more expensive than your regular affordable housing product because you have to also pay for social services space. We expect that for every dollar we put in, we will be able to leverage between $3 and $4 in additional funding.
Big issue downtown, help me out with this. We're moving the homeless out during certain times of the day. They're coming to Venice by the hundreds. They're setting up encampments. Crime has dramatically increased, drugs have gone, we're in a dilemma. How do we deal with it? What do we do with the homeless people today? We have no place for them to go. Help me.
This program does not help those today. What it does do is permit us to work with your office and the service providers in your district to find a site in your district that surrounds the services centers that you, very good services that you have in your district, that surround it so that we begin to site housing within 10 blocks of the main service providers so that we can create a hub of services and housing for the homeless. So it's the beginning to find sites in your district.
But help me out. If we have 45,000 homeless in the city today, right now, we're just pushing them around. I mean, let's face the facts. Downtown, of course, shouldn't have homeless encampments. It's going through a growth and a development, but where do these people go? How do we deal with the crisis right now? Could the mayor provide some leadership in finding a piece of land somewhere that's big enough to let these folks have a place to go so we just don't continue to criminalize them?
I imagine you're talking about shelters.
I'm talking about a location. You know, people have dreams about spots where they can, I met with a group of homeless last night. The guy said, "I need a place to shower, I need a place to get my act together." They're working with chrysalis, they actually have jobs, but the guy said, "I live in my car for the last six months, I have no place to clean up." Can we provide, maybe at the airport, some land there, or some other place somewhere where they can be put in, given potty, you know, bathrooms and stuff like that, so we can just contain it in one area?
Yes. You, yes, but that is an issue of political will, and you're deciding as a council with the mayor that you would want to do that. There are examples where things like that have been done. I'll tell you the truth, when I was the deputy general counsel of HUD, we did something like that for farmworkers. In Riverside County, we actually started a center there and funded it with HUD money that created both a place for them, for farmworkers who had no place to live, were living under trees, to shower, and a place for them to cook in a contained setting. So yes, the city council could choose to do something like that.
Well, I urge my colleagues and the mayor to do it because I don't want them on my streets in Venice. They're right in front of people's homes now like they've been downtown.
Yes.
But they have no place to go. So why can't we, as a group, come up with a location somewhere that can temporarily house these people until we create more services, more assisted supportive housing? I met with providers last night, too, nine different groups. They don't have enough funds to do their basic work that they're doing now, and they all refer each other to each other, they work as a tremendous team. Can we get more funding for the St. Joseph's Center, the Venice Family Clinic, and these other outreach groups that are literally providing Band-Aids?
Yes, but most of that money is actually controlled by the county of Los Angeles, those services dollars. So that is really an issue of continuing to work with the county and with the state as they take a look at the Prop 63 mental health dollars.
Because the crisis is huge, and I know that Ms. Perry's right about wanting to fix up the downtown, but they're now coming to Venice, and my constituents, and I will not tolerate encampments in Venice. What can we do about that now? It's an emergency I have.
Well, what you've already suggested, we're going to have to find sites. I believe that last two weeks ago, you, the city council, put forward a motion asking LASSA to work with others to do that. So I imagine that's already in progress.
Thank you very much for your leadership and what you're doing on this. You're really part of the solution on the issues here. Thank you.
It is our pleasure to be so.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
I also rise to congratulate you and the department for getting us to this point this quickly. I'm afraid to be available on Friday, should everyone sign off the way they could, or should. That's incredible. But in your estimation, given our patterns of investment and where developers go, where do you see most of these units being built? Is there particular areas of the city that you see it more than likely to occur, given the number of units?
Well, I guess it is a good time to talk about this particular way of thinking. When I first joined you almost three years ago, I said to you all that one of the issues that we were going to have to look at was that we were passive developers, that we put money out and we simply had developers come in and tell us where. This program, for the first time, gives design guidelines and actually makes clear that it is meant to be a citywide program. So it is a matter of working with elected officials, with communities, on siting, because the money is available citywide where we can also ensure that the services are. So what's important is that this time around, we're not focused in driving the money in one area. It is a citywide program available for all of you. We're happy to work with you. I would also say that in areas where the Redevelopment Agency has an area, they are more than willing to work with the city council office and the community on siting, which is also one of the exciting things, is that we're all working together in lockstep, all of these agencies to do it together. So we're amenable to working with you councilmen in siting it in your district and in others. And I know saying that to you is redundant because you already do more than your share.
The notion here of decreasing those pressures because of the concentration, do you feel that we need to start identifying or redefining a new category in zoning so that we have destinations that allow us to at least connect the infrastructure to the support system in the general, within the general plan? Or is that, is there, or is this too premature to raise that level of structuring, how we deal with our notion of space? Please hold my time.
It may be a bit too early because it's important, we're looking at transit-oriented districts, and many of these folks, they need access to transit like everyone else. So I don't think we need a special zone. What we need to do is to continue working with our planning director on the community plans, and in taking a look, particularly on transit corridors, where we already have the zoning in place that will facilitate it, and use the tools that we already have. You know those better than myself, but I think that's the first place to start. And then talk about special zones after we see, because the crisis is now, these special zones and the studies that would be needed, I don't know we need to start that now when we have other tools that are already readily available.
And I say this now because I know I have two and a half years left. To do a change in plan takes about a year and a half, sometimes two if you get into a lawsuit.
Yes.
So I really have about six months.
That's about right.
So colleagues, I know this is something that makes us all uncomfortable, and I share this with all of you, but there comes a time, I believe, where we need to ask our constituents, where do you see housing in our respective districts? And like we are dealing with the trash waste and how no one wants an incinerator, or, I'm sorry not to call that, but you know what I'm saying, no one wants those facilities near their home. No one wants the homeless near their neighborhood. But if we're going to be maximizing the use of these precious funds, there has to be a destination for these facilities. And if we get sued in the process because no one wanted it in their backyard, a good portion of money is going to go out the window in the legal process, cost of construction. So my bottom line is, I'm hoping in the next six months, because I'll be asking the director of planning to do this, is actually pose the question to you, where do you see housing in your district, the densities? And where do you see specialized housing for support services? Because literally, our clock is ticking, there's half of us that might not be here, and we will continue in this circle, and we'll continue with these bandages, and we'll continue to listen to those that say, "Oh, my God, isn't that terrible?", but that's their problem. So again, I say this in public for the audience because we need to support those who are truly putting their money where their mouth is, but now we have to put our political will in that particular decision of where they go. So appreciate that, I just want to take this opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. San Fernando Valley.
Yes, sir.
Not a lot of social service organizations out in the San Fernando Valley. Woodland Hills, Tarzana, West Hills, Canoparque, Cita Winetca, Sun Valley, Van Nuys. You've got communities that are hard-pressed currently for housing, for workforce housing. We are saturated with people, our transportation system doesn't work very well. How do we include this in the other component where we're trying to have workforce housing established? Now we're talking about another component on top of something that we're striving to accomplish, which we haven't accomplished. And I understand the homeless situation, I've got compassion for the homeless population, but I've also got concern about the people in those communities of the San Fernando Valley and the rest of the city of Los Angeles. They're already maxed out, and what we don't have, which other communities have, is the social service aspect. You talk about a 10-block radius. If you take a 10-block radius of areas in my district, we don't have, if there's one or two, that would be a lot. We have them for seniors. One generation serves the senior population, serves children for childcare, we have some senior citizen operations, but we don't really have any homeless social service organizations out there. Are you now proposing to accomplish this? We establish those with the other component of housing, when we're already trying to establish workforce housing for our public safety personnel, and our teachers and our nurses, and we can't even accomplish that. So I'm trying to figure out how we make this work in the real world.
You cannot have permanent supportive housing if you don't have the social services. Cannot.
That means that certain parts of the city will have the impact of the homeless population and other communities won't. For example, we had the Dome Village, which has been shut down and removed. That was a homeless environment, as I understand. I don't know if social services were out there, but I'll be very candid with you. What I see happening is the down, and I had lunch yesterday at Metroplex, down here in one of the alleys in the Arts District. The developers want to develop this downtown region for residential, and I understand that. And there's a homeless population, which really impedes them and people who want to live there. So now I see a spreading this throughout the city, but certain areas are going to be impacted. Mr. Reyes' district will be impacted more than mine and some of my colleagues in the valley, and the valley folks are going to say, "We're trying to do workforce housing, we don't want this coming in our community," as you talk about the NIMBYism. How do you make this all work and appease the people who want to develop their properties, which I think they have a right to do, and provide housing? But this other component of how do we take care of those that are down and out and need some help?
I would say this to you, sir. There is a way, and it's proven successful in many large cities, where you can both provide workforce housing, in fact, I've seen in New York, both workforce housing up to 250% of AMI, and housing for those below 30% of AMI, all in the same building. So essentially, the homeless and the middle class in the same building, living side by side, with the appropriate level of services provided. That is the key. In your district, it is absolutely possible to do both. I can tell you that separately, I hope to be before you within the month, on the extension of our moderate-income housing program, our workforce housing program, which is going gangbusters. It's really working, and the commitments are being made all over the city. Developers are now coming forward for forward commitments, and we're going to actually come forward to you to ask you for another allocation, a transfer of our own funds. So we're doing very well on the workforce housing front as we've begun our program.
But those are people who are employed, not a homeless population.
No, we're talking people that are up to $100,000 of family income. That's what, so when I say workforce housing, I'm actually speaking about people between about $60,000 a year to $100,000 a year.
And when you and I were young, that was a lot of money.
That was a lot of money.
Not anymore.
But that's the way to get somebody started. Folks at $100,000 with our programs, they can afford it, and they're doing pretty well on these new homes.
Now, the homeless component without work, without a job, without the ability to pay rent or the other necessities of life, how do we accommodate that?
That's what we're doing with this program. Because here what we're doing, in order to build the housing, you know how expensive it is, you know Hart Village is a, is a good program, but it's an expensive deal, right? What we're going to do here is provide both the capital for the building itself and operating, we've never done this before, and the operating, in other words, it's a rent subsidy that comes in the form of Project Based Section 8. It is the platinum of affordable housing because it will allow the developer to write down that cost completely as it relates to the very, very poor. With social services provided by the county, these programs, these deals will be self-sustaining. That's what's so important about this, is that we're not doing, for instance, what in the federal government or in the state government, we here would talk about an unfunded mandate.
Right.
We're not doing that. We're funding it so that there is not the reason to say, "We started and we can't finish it." We're doing it right from the very beginning, giving the developer both the capital and the operating for that rent subsidy, and that will make the entire difference. That's what makes this program historic in our city.
I understand the rent subsidy, but if you hold my time for this question, serious question, the rent subsidy, but is that individual required to work?
No.
To pay?
Most of those people that will, we're talking about the chronically homeless, are folks who have severe mental illness, so they receive SSI, they do, they receive all those things. And that, through the process, they will all be enrolled in if they are not already. But we're talking about folks who, for a variety of reasons, will never, may never be able to work, and that the most important thing we can do is stabilize them. Once they, I've seen them, I've been to New York and to San Francisco, once they have the appropriate level of services and folks who are checking, is, we're talking about somebody who's looking at meds every day, the real level of services that you need, these, these housing units, they function beautifully because it's thought out from beginning to end, and that's what this program does.
So the person who's making $100,000 a year or $90,000 a year with a family that is in one of these units will be next door to a homeless individual?
Probably not in, not in LA, and certainly not in the valley, and this is why.
I'll ask you to press your button again if you'd like to speak.
No, I asked for the time hold, but I think you were distracted.
I know, I did, and then...
Not long enough.
Two and a half minutes over.
Anyway, just one more question.
Last one.
Neighborhood councils, can you make sure, because I have some real issues and concerns about this, the neighborhood councils weigh in on it because I think there's going to be a beehive of activity and concern. The concept you're talking about, I don't see working here, but I support what you're trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
Include the neighborhood councils.
You should know that we went through a very long public process so that there was every opportunity, and many organizations did come forward to have input.
Specifically, neighborhood councils.
We will make sure that they get the notice, but very open notice.
Mr. Rosendahl is next.
Thank you, Mr. President, for your questions.
No problem.
I just want a minute on this. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, you're a bright light, and I just want to thank you for all the creative ideas you have of packaging things, multiplying things, and making things happen. God bless you for that. I am just thrilled. I just want to announce that we're having the homeless committee meeting, will be in the district, my district, on October the 26th.
trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
Include the neighborhood councils.
You should know that we went through a very long public process, so that there was every opportunity, and many organizations did come forward to have input.
Specifically, neighborhood councils.
We'll make sure that they get the notice.
Mr. Rosendahl is next.
Thank you, Mr. President, for your questions.
No problem.
I just want a minute on this. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, you're a bright light, and I just want to thank you for all the creative ideas you have of packaging things, multiplying things, and making things happen. God bless you for that. I am just thrilled. I just want to announce that we're having the homeless committee meeting. We'll be in the district, my district, on October the 26th. That's a Thursday at 6:00 at the Westminster Elementary School in Venice. We'd love for you to be there, and our community will be turning out. But as Mr. Reyes said so eloquently, all 15 of us have to take our fair share of the responsibility. But you must, and I'm going to put a motion into this effect, we have to find locations now where these people can be moved to, flat land somewhere. I don't know where it is, but with a big southland like this, we should be able, with the county, to find some locations where homeless people can be moved to. Because what's happening downtown, frankly, is their stuff is being taken, you know, by the police, rightly so, because they shouldn't be there, but they can't get back at it the way they want to. It's a real problem. So they're moving to my district right now, and I won't tolerate it in my district. And it's reached the point where we must find some land in the region where homeless people can live in dignity while we're flushing more money into services, while we're building supportive, you know, permanent housing, while we're working with the federal, the state, and local government. I just don't want the police to be out there wasting their energy, getting a person, grabbing them, putting them maybe through the criminal justice system, bringing them back out. It's all costing us a lot of money, and it's nowhere near the solution. And I don't want to push it from one neighborhood to another, or one other part to the other. So I'm looking forward to that kind of leadership for a place. But God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. And thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, for announcing that as well. We had a great meeting in Hollywood on homeless youth that was very well attended, and we've looked at the issues here at City Hall and downtown. A few different things I wanted to highlight. One, I want to thank all my colleagues for their support of this initiative, and the mayor pushing forward with $50 million. It showed real leadership, and pledging another $50 million this year gives us $100 million to begin to do this, which, by the statistics in this report, will result in somewhere between 600 and 1,000 units of housing. That'll probably house eventually more than that many people, because some of them will have multiple people if we ever do supportive housing for families and other members of the homeless population. But that said, colleagues, we have to be looking at a long-term way of doing this. A couple points I wanted to make. One was the importance with the county, and I'm glad to see that we have some progress, but the importance of the county mental health part of the picture, as we've heard in public comment and other people, that dual diagnosis and that important piece of being able to make sure that the people who are applying for this money also line up with county money. We really continue to reach out to supervisors in the county to be their partners, because we're only half of this equation, and we need them to be there too. Second, we can't campaign one way or the other, but it's the importance of putting something on the ballot. Proposition H is on the ballot, which would also address a permanent source of funding that would allow these sorts of permanent supportive housing facilities to be built. And I think people should know that that's on the ballot and look at that very carefully and weigh that very carefully this next month, when there's $1 billion that would be available, a portion of that $250 million specifically for permanent supportive housing and housing for formerly homeless individuals. So that is also quite good. And then the last piece, which I know Mr. Reyes spoke about, Mr. Rosendahl spoke about, Ms. Perry, our chair of the Ad Hoc Committee, has actually, and I think when this came up with the downtown settlement, put forward how many shelter beds there are everywhere. And you actually seconded a motion we already put forward, so I don't think we need to do one on five, trying to find at least 500 additional beds right now. Probably we need more than that, but at least we can use that motion as the basis for where we're going to put people right away. But we also are going to be introducing a motion shortly that looks at a lot of the concerns about people's goods, where their possessions are put, transportation, so that sometimes we have a bed, but if you can't bring your stuff with you, you're not going to go to another neighborhood. And also trying to get some statistics of what's actually going on with the Safe for City Initiative. What is happening, not just in the rest, but are people moving to other places? So we can have those metrics to judge this on those issues that were brought up too. Because until we have beds matching homeless populations in each of our council districts, folks, it is inhumane, it is unfair, and we shouldn't look at what people's rhetoric is. We should look at what their actions are in their district. Thank you.
That's our final speaker on this matter. We have three public comments. I don't know when they turn these in, but do we want to open it up for public comment? We have three cards. It's open for public comment? All right. Our first speaker, Zuma Dog.
Thank you so much.
One minute apiece. One minute.
Excellent presentation. I'd say, first of all, the CRA, right now, Lower Chicks running an audit, the CRA is a problem, a lot of money coming in and out, it's tough to keep track of it. A lot of loans have been made that haven't been paid back. So I'm really glad that we'll be getting up to 100 million, because that's about what the amount of loans are. We need community outreach. Money needs, there's a lot of community outreach programs, so I'd like to call attention to those right now. The AADAP, the Act in Rehabilitation Center, Alcoholics Anonymous, Red Cross, Behavioral Health Services, Charles Drew University, Cocaine Anonymous, Faith in Communities, Homeless Outreach Program, Homeless Women and Children's Program, Los Angeles Metropolitan Churches, Los Angeles Warm Springs, these are some of the things. I'll be posting on my website some of these community outreach programs, and we've got county money that can hopefully fund these, give some philanthropic donations as well. And we've got some other good public speakers coming up here, and let's see what else. Before my time runs out, y'all, yeah, yeah, these are some of the people you need to hit up. Give them some of that money, y'all, and pay back some of them loans too while you're at it.
Thank you. Candido Maris.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to compliment you on some of the salient questions that you had. I'm the co-chairman of Van Nuys Community Court, and in New York, they have a community court. They have it in Manhattan, they have it in Red Hook, and what they do is they don't push the homeless out into the other areas. That's not what we want to do. We want to take these individuals and help them. We want to help them with their housing. We want to help them with their drug problems. We want to help them with their social issues. But we need funding. We've been around for almost five and a half years. Manhattan was one, we were number three, and yet we struggle today. We have the answers. All we need is your participation. We can't push them away. They're part of our lives. We need them. We need to help them.
Jose Aguilar.
I served in a PAC on the Alanta Project for three years. Here's a concern that I have with this housing fund. You're taking CRA money, you're giving it to nonprofits who create a lot of density in our communities. These nonprofits do not pay property taxes. They're immune from property taxes, and yet they're flooding our schools, creating the situation where they need more school space, and then they come after the homeowners to take their homes away to provide that school space. I think that we need, first, we need homebuyer programs. We don't need nonprofits sucking up taxpayers' funds, not paying property taxes, and flooding our areas with density and creating this havoc with our infrastructure. We don't have enough school spaces. Our schools are about 5,000 students at Belmont, and you want to flood the area with more density? First, provide for the infrastructure, then create the density. Don't create the density without the infrastructure.
Deep South 81.
Thank you, Mr. Ad Hoc Council President Zine. Bill, you got this one exactly right, Mr. Rosendahl. It's something I got to give him credit for today. You see in the paper today on the LA Times, marching all those police officers into Skid Row. And where are they going to put them? They're just processing through the bratism that we have right now, which, you know, I don't mind getting the bad, the, you know, the drug dealers, but they don't live at Skid Row. They're drug dealers. They've got the money. They live in the nice hotels, right? But, Mr. Zine, we've got an establishment now, it's called Elijah House, up in Newcastle Street in your district. There's another one, it's called Reach for the Top, where we want to open some of these homes and get some people rehabilitate, because that's what it's about. There really is no point. But you're right about having them, getting them somewhere in the daytime where they can clean themselves up, because it's the daytime is where you're going to be able to help them, because social workers do not work at night.
Thank you. Michael, carry on. And that'll be our final speaker.
Thank you. You know, when we come to the homeless issues here, basically, we're trying to push them and push them away. You're not going to push them anywhere. They're already under the freeway overpass, they're already in the alleys, they're already in your backyards. Okay? Mr. Reyes knows you have most of them there. I deal with them on a daily basis, sir. We need some issues, we need to address the issues. And my fact, my, what my biggest thing is the mental issue. These people are dual diagnosed, and when they can't get the medication that they need by spending a whole day and a half in the hospital and another day to get their medication, they self-medicate themselves. When you're hearing voices and you can't do anything because you're hearing voices, you self-medicate yourself so you don't hear their voices. We need some help to get these people on the right meds, then they can get on the right track. It's not a drug addiction, it's a mental health issue. And you got to address those mental issues before you can address any addiction issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 25 is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That's approved. Thank you.
Can we have that fourth with, please?
Fourth with. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 46 was called special for cards from the public.
Item number 46, Zuma Dog.
Okay, this is one of those special event fee waivers. I'm a half-full, half-empty guy on this one, because first of all, it's the Los Angeles Kings, and that ain't a nonprofit group and that type of thing. But it's the LA Kings, it's a city thing. So I just want to say, as long as we're spending money on this, it's going to be October 7th. Come on out, y'all, for the LA Kings, open night, yeah, yeah. Where do the LA Kings play? Where do they go for this? Staples? Come on down to Staples Center, October 6th, for the LA Kings tailgate party, yeah, yeah. Maybe Zuma Dog will show up and do a little singing, do a little dancing, meet the constituents, y'all, because like I say, as long as we're spending money for this event that we shouldn't be spending it on, because the LA Kings is a commercial entity, y'all. But it is a city thing, y'all, so yeah, just come on out, have a good time. Hootie-hoo.
Matt Dowd.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to change my name, I think, to Pony, because then it can be the Dog and Pony Show. But we love the dog and ponies. Santa Anita's opened up too, by the way. We got a massive pick three there on Saturday, Sunday, into Healthy Addiction. Every now and then, they hand out money at that place, too. But look, yeah, this one, the hockey, Ed Reyes behind this one, I just wanted to say, I support the, most of your initiatives, and I want you to fight the federal government about this wall. I believe that we need to keep the North American continent together and fight overseas. You know, there is no terrorism in this town. I don't see any more people dying from AIDS and terrorism.
Excuse me, Mr. President, he appears to be off topic.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time's up. Items before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Item's approved. Next item, please.
Item 52 was called special for cards from the public.
Mr. Dowd.
Wow, this is a tough one to go against, because it's the Christmas parade and everyone loves Christmas. But I know it's only a certain percentage of the community who actually celebrate that particular holiday, so this is $91,000 to the 75th Annual Hollywood Christmas Parade. Now, I just want to ask, or hope, and make a comment, that I hope there's no gay floats in the Christmas parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Item before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 56 was called special for cards from the public.
Item 56, we have Matt Dowd.
Okay, reset the clock. Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, this one, I just want to, you know, this is a serious one. I want to make the call again for an anonymous tip line. You know, these are serious incidents, need to be solved, and people aren't coming forward for $50,000 if they have to release their identity and risk retaliation from the perpetrators of these murders. So I'm calling for an anonymous tip line where people can give a fake name, give their information. If the police check that information and it works out, then that person can come back and collect like $500 or $1,000 with no questions. We do it, we're doing it for babies, you know, we're making exemptions all over the place for this, that, and the other. We need one for this.
Thank you. Just for a point of clarification, there is a witness protection program in the county of Los Angeles. You can also report that to the police anonymously, but there is a witness protection program. Next person, Candido Maris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mentioned this young lady the other day, sadly, Caitlin Avila. I had also mentioned the name of Stephanie Hewin, who was killed in 1995. We continue to see these deaths take place in our city. The cowards that go around our streets and shoot young kids, when are we going to finally deal with them? You know, there's another death that takes place in our streets, Mr. President, council members, and that's when families find out about their children that are now hooked on drugs and are part of gangs. The influence is too great, and no one knows that better than myself. We need to capture these cowards. Thank you.
Thank you. Items before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 57 was called special for a card from the public.
Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yeah, yeah. This is about putting in a, I guess for the voting, putting in the voting booths and the polls right there in a parking lot on Venice Beach. I'd say, sorry, we can't be having this now, because what happened, we got rampant homelessness right now camping out in these parking lots there on Venice, because first y'all passed an ordinance banning the sale of incense, jewelry, T-shirts. So you got a lot of the artists. Zuma Dog, this is the six-month anniversary of Zuma Dog being here over this issue, and the problem's gotten worse. You got a lot of homeless people there now, because they've lost their income. Plus, of course, with the Skid Row enforcement, a lot of the people from downtown Skid Row are there now in Venice, y'all. So I don't see how you can be popping up a big election booth that's going to look real bad when everybody's seeing homeless tent encampments right there in the parking lot. So if you want to do that, you better also put another special event fee waiver for the city of LA, LAPD, to head on down there the day before and clear everybody out or do something with them, y'all, because, you know, that's going to look real bad. I don't know, there's not going to be any room to put these voting machines in the parking lot. There's too many homeless from all over the city. Now do something about it.
Mr. Regular.
Well, I want to secede over to Mr. Zuma Dog. Give him another minute on the homeless issue at Venice, and also want to give the homeless a voting address on Venice, so they could go vote in Venice in Mr. Rosendahl's district, since they're being kicked out of Skid Row.
So that was a yield, yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. How appropriate on my sixth anniversary of Irenhun City Hall. So let's just say, I did come from Venice Beach, and what happened was they passed an illegal, what I consider to be unconstitutional law.
You're not going to be able to take his time. He's given up his time, and he didn't yield. There's no yield permitted. You can't yield the time, so you are done.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd. Next up.
Okay, this is providing space so all the people can come and pick up their ballots for the November election. One of those ballot items being Prop R, which was recently ruled on by a judge that said, "Well, let's go vote on that, and if it's successful, then we'll come before the court." So I think he killed Prop R, because who wants to vote on something that still has to go to court after the election? So that's what they're coming to pick up, all the supplies for the polling booths. And then one week later, they've got to come and resupply again. But just so that you know, folks, on the ballot, there's a thing called Prop R, and it has a huge legal cloud all over it. So just vote no, and that solves the whole issue.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Off topic. That item's concluded. Item before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Mr. President, that does leave the closed session items. And there is a card on one of those items.
Public comment before we go into closed session. And that's item number 61. Matt Dowd.
Okay, yeah, closed session item. This looks like five legal cases against the former police chief Darrell Gates and the LAPD. Now, I don't even remember how long ago he was the police chief. But I'm thinking, boy, if we're settling these cases in 2006, I'd hate to see how many of these parks ones we're going to have. And then the bratton ones, you know? My grandkids will be paying for that, all the Skid Row. A federal judge already said, "Stop arresting those people." But hello, you've got to come out and start arresting people. So good luck. I'm glad we've got plenty of money to pay for these.
Thank you. Now we're going to go into closed session. According to the California Law Government Code, we are going to go into closed session. So we are going to be closing the chambers, and we will open up after closed session. Thank you. Okay, we're back on, Mr. Clerk. Review the items we just discussed in closed session.
Yes, Mr. President. On item 58, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $720,000 in the case of David Allen Jones versus City.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
9 ayes, 1 no.
Next item.
On item 59, there's a recommendation for a stipulated award of 70 and 3/4% permanent disability in the amount of $99,647.50 payable at $230 per week, plus a life pension of $52,434 payable at $41.55 per week, payable at the conclusion of permanent disability in the workman's comp case entitled Teresa Reitz versus City.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item.
On item 60, there was a request to continue that matter one week.
If there's no objection to that being continued, that'll be the order of business. Next item, please.
On item 61, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $2,850,000 in the cases entitled Diaz, Bloomberg, Guerrero, Figueroa, and Soli versus Gates.
All right.